Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Selectment's meeting on February 27, 2024, 6:30 PM. Let's stand up and pressure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's go a minute from the regular meeting on February 13.
Motion approved as amended.
Second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Community relations announcements and open forum.
Good evening. Announcements for the Board of Selectmen meeting February 27, 2024. Nomination papers for the 2024 Annual Town Election are available in the Town Clerk's office. Please see the Town's Clerk election page on the Town's website for open seats. Early voting for the March 5, 2024 Presidential Primary and Special State Election will take place during regular office hours during the week of February 26. See the website for details. Presidential Primary and Special State Election, March 5, 2024, Heritage School, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. March is National Quilt Month, and Charlton Public Library is celebrating with the following programs and events. All month, we will have beautiful quilts on display that was donated to the Friends of Charlton Public Library by the Cornerstone Quilt Guild for a fundraiser. Visit the library for more information. On Saturday, March 2, from 10:30 to 12, the library welcomes award-winning quilter Timna Tar for a presentation and trunk show in Dexter Hall. Register on the library events calendar to attend. This program is funded in part by a grant from the Charlton Cultural Council, a local agency which is supported by the Mass Cultural Council Estate Agency. On Saturday, March 16, from 10 to 2, the Cornerstone Quilt Guild will host their annual mini-quilt display and demonstration in Dexter Hall. No registration required, so please stop by.
I only want to add that Blueberry Festival is looking for volunteers. If anybody has any interest in helping out, please let us know. You can reach us on our website, the town website. Thank you. Appointments and resignations. Oh, anybody for open forum?
All right, so appointment for the first appointment is for register of voters per Master of Law, Chapter 51. Voters, when a register of voters term is about to expire, we must notify the chairman of either the Democratic Town Committee or Republican Town Committee of this and ask them for a list or recommendation of appointment for someone to fill the next term. The appointments are made by the Board of Selectmen. We contacted the Democratic Town Committee Acting Chair Pat Suckell, and their recommendation is for the board to reappoint Geraldo Alasea as registrar of voters, Democrat, until April 1, 2027. And I recommend that the board make the appointment.
So moved and thank you, Joe.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a resignation. Attached is a resignation from Bill Fetter as the local inspector effective March 1, 2024. He's offered to stay on to assist up to 15 hours a week until a replacement was hired. He was appointed by the Town of Palmer as their building commissioner. So it's a little bit of a career progression for him, so congratulations, but the board should accept his resignation.
Motion to congratulate and congratulations, Bill.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Scheduled appointments. New business.
The Mary Martha Guild has a request for a special alcoholic beverage license. Attached is an application submitted by the Mary Martha Guild for a special alcoholic beverage license to be used on March 23, 2024, and November 16, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM at St. Joseph's Church Hall for a meat raffle. The application has been reviewed and approved by the Police Chief, Building Commissioner, and Fire Department for the board's policy. If the special alcoholic beverage license is approved, the date of the license should be for the day before the event to allow the alcohol to be delivered, the day of the event, and the day after the event to allow alcohol left over to be paid back.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the special alcoholic beverage license as submitted by Mary Martha Guild for a meat raffle with dates on the license to be March 22, 24, through March 25, 24, and November 15, 24, through November 17, 24, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM respectively.
And second, then.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The next is the request from the Overlook for a request for special alcoholic beverage license. Attached is an application submitted by the Overlook for a special alcoholic beverage license to be used March 7, 2024, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at 88 Masonic Home Road for the Charlton Fire Department Dinner. Application has been reviewed and approved by Police Chief, Building Commissioner, and Fire Department. The same policy applies to this license as well.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the special alcoholic beverage license as submitted by the Overlook for the Charlton Fire Department Dinner, with the dates on the license to be March 6 through March 8, 2024, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Scholarship questions for 2024. Each year, the Town Charlton is charged with awarding students for the following scholarships: the Nehemiah B. Stone Scholarship, which was given to the town to be used for scholarships for graduating seniors of Shepard Hill Regional High School and Bay Path Locational High School who reside within the boundaries of what was formerly School District Number 2 in the Town of Charlton; the Jesse Smith Educational Fund, which was given to the town with the general intent and purpose to assist in providing educational advantages for children of the districts 3 and 4 in Charlton; the Edwin Phillips Cooking Fund, which was accepted by the town in 1915 with the general intent and purpose to assist in teaching the art of cooking and domestic science; and the M. Wayne Colby Scholarship is awarded by the family. In order to apply for these scholarships, the Board of Selectmen chooses a question in essay form to be completed by students who are interested in applying for one or more of these scholarships. With the assistance and recommendation of the schools, the Board of Selectmen can choose the most qualified recipients. After reviewing past questions, I would recommend the board consider the following question for the Nehemiah B. Stone Scholarship, Jesse Smith Educational Fund, and M. Wayne Colby Scholarship. If you were to run for public office, what three issues would your campaign be based on and why? And for the Edwin Phillips Cooking Fund, I would recommend the following: Were role models in your life influenced due to continued in the food service industry and where you see yourself in the future?
I think that both those questions are fantastic, and motion two of us.
Second.
I'm only gonna, my point on this is we didn't get too many applications last year, so we should do something extra, something more, or something, I don't know, to get it out to the schools. Maybe school comedy, maybe, you know.
Student representatives?
Yeah, yeah, a few, maybe social media, definitely, you know, town website. Because how many did we get last year, do you remember? I don't know that that was not enough.
Yeah, we had some that didn't.
That was disappointing.
We didn't have that.
Yeah. I know that they were hanging them in a Shepard Hill office. Can you check on this? Yeah. How is that being communicated with the students?
Yeah, it typically goes through the guidance, the guidance office.
And maybe we can hang it on that wall there in the office, and same for Bay Path. You know, how to get it, how to get the word out there. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, so applications are due back in our office by May 1, 2024. Will be brought to the board for awarding and attributing.
And now, old business.
All right. First one up is the discussion on the fire station project. So as previously discussed, the board is scheduled to discuss options relative to financing strategies for the fire substation project. Committee has been meeting to finalize site layout configurations, inclining tax code, funding priorities. Project teams are scheduled to receive schematic design estimates in the first week in April, and we're presenting options based on feasibility study, which was factored, which factored escalation to the winter 2024 construction start when it was done. Attached are financial options for consideration to begin the planning process ahead of whatever necessary votes we're going to be considering on this. And Chief Knopf is here to discuss the project and all the available funding options. So here, I kind of outlined just a few things that we kind of talked about. I do want to qualify it. This is based off the feasibility, and once we have the schematic design, knowing that there has been some shifts in the building and we're kind of tightening things up, these numbers can function. So I just kind of want to say we are in the planning process around this, but subject to change, so.
So, Madam Chair. So for those at home, again, you can check out on our webpage the details, but most of you are probably going to be concerned with what it's going to impact your overall tax bill. There's going to be four different options that are laid out. They range from a high of $236 for the average homeowner per year. Again, this is alternative. $214 is the second one, $179, I'm going to get around here, so, is the third one, and $140 is the fourth one. So $236 roughly on the high end, $140 on the low end per year, depending upon like how many years that we go for. So that's, we're going to get, I'm sure, get into a bunch of details, but for those at home, that's kind of what we're talking about.
Madam Chair, if I may follow up to Mr. Rosi's comment, if I may ask Andrew. Again, for those at home, and correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand it, by the time this, and this is important to the decision-making process, by the time this would actually hit a tax bill for a resident, other debt exclusions may be coming off. So I think it's important for people at home and members of this board to know what's coming off in the balance account and when, because you could be looking at, to Bill's point, a $179 or a $140. If we're putting $140 on at the same time, and $140 is coming off, then effectively, there's no tax increase. Now, to Bill's, what he said many times, it's just a perpetual, it's a permanent tax increase. You keep adding things as they go away, but the reality is, in the end, it would still be a wash. So I think it's important for this board and people at home to know when this would actually impact them and what would be coming off on the other end.
So the largest debt exclusion that we're still carrying right now, the last year of it for the DPW project is FY '25. So after FY '25, it's about $200,000 a year that will drop off of the, will drop off the assessment. I'm sorry, I don't have that calculated out as to what that currently impacts. But the debt exclusion would hit the tax bill one year after completion. And so once the bonds are, once the bonds are issued on the final project, one year after that. Right now, we're projecting that to be approximately FY '27, FY '28.
Okay, so, okay, I hear you're right, the one, where the one before this would actually hit.
And two years in between, at least.
Approximately, at least two years.
My two cents is for discussion, to kind of kick things off. I like option three at the moment, which again, for those at home, it would be, and Andrew, correct me where I go astray. It's a 15-year borrowing cost. The year one is going to be $179, $179.60 for an increase, and that, I believe, decreases over time?
So I should say, the debt exclusion we look at for a 20-year, on a 20-year borrow. So year one, it would be about $1.1 million excluded. That would depreciate down to $678,000.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was reading this wrong.
On the last, on the 20th year, so you're going to see that drop off over time.
Yep.
The next, the next column underneath that is what we would look to try to fund under the limit.
Gotcha, sorry, my bad.
So looking at it as almost two different loans. One, one is an excluded loan for 20 years, and one is $2.3 million underneath the levy limit, borrowed over 15.
My concern with option four.
Borrowed over how many years?
15.
My concern with option four from the board is that it takes a lot under the levy limit, which generally I'm not necessarily like opposed to. However, knowing the costs, knowing that at year 15, at least under the levy limit, we break even, I think that helps our longer-term strategic planning. And the delta between option three and option four is approximately $40 per year, but I think option three gives us more liquidity and flexibility, while at the same time making, again, putting enough under the limit so that it minimizes the tax increase as best we can without being too harsh.
Madam Chair, my thoughts on these, like Bill, I like option three and four. Those two, which have also the least impact to the residents. I also tend to defer the banker, but I do lean toward option three and four.
But the difference between three and four is it puts us in a little bit of predicament, depending on what the schools do. If the schools come in and say they want another million dollars a year, and we're already tied into both two bonds at that point.
Well, I'm sorry, I had to interrupt, but when you say two bonds, what are we?
Well, because we're talking about the soft cost and the original cost, right?
So I kind of broke this out, that option three says that, you know, borrowing as the construction cost, you're excluding the debt of the construction itself. All of your soft costs, all of your engineering design, that all falls underneath the levy limit.
So the debt exclusion under option three would be 13.4, oh, 13, basically 13 million rounded. Option four would be 10 million.
Yeah, and like Andrew said, this is just those costs only based on those numbers, only based on a feasibility study that you have could be very well, you know, two here or more.
Yeah, it could be more, it could be less.
Yeah.
See, I'm sorry, again, I didn't mean to interrupt, that's why I told my.
No, no. So, yeah, so I definitely, you know, see Bill's point, I, from a strategic perception, I think option three was good, is good, but given, given the past voting patterns of the voters, they don't want tax increases, so I think we need to consider minimizing them, because we definitely need this fire, this fire substation. So, you know, I opened to option four, but I do think option three is better for the town strategically, but if it means option four to get us through, get this passed, then I will support that as well.
Madam Chair, may I just throw the curveball? Why couldn't we, because the bottom line is the board is going to make a recommendation, but we don't have the final say. Anyway, the people are going to decide, they're going to vote yes or no. Why couldn't we put option three and four both on a warrant? And when we discuss the first option with town meeting voters, we explain why one option is preferred by this board, and if they agree and they like it, we just postpone the other article indefinitely and it dies. But they know that there's another option. If they don't like it, and they can fail the first one, knowing they have the option four, so.
I think we're talking, just for strategy and timing, I think we wanted to look at time and we wanted to see, if we need to go to exclusion the next election is beginning of May, the town meeting at the, in the middle of May. So that's where it was like, all right, we're not going to have that town meeting to feel out the town meeting voters before we get to a ballot, unless the board's willing to consider a standalone ballot question. But I know that that's not popular with this board, otherwise you'd have to wait until the November election.
But we don't put a number on the ballot for debt exclusion, do we?
That is one thing that we've been talking about with our bond council, is that by going the 13.4 method, we could put it on the ballot.
Would we have to?
That is what we brought up, and they said that that was possible.
Yeah, I suppose where I'm getting it, because actually.
Possible, but it's not yet.
Right.
But I was thinking, because I didn't think of David's idea, and I think it's a good one, that if we, just use cases out for a second, and again, Stephen Bach, which I hate to feel, but you know, raised on like Pete, me, Dave. If option three or four, one of the two options, again, this is hypothetical. We have the election first, and we put it on there saying, do you support doing a debt exclusion to be determined at town meeting two weeks later? All right. If the answer is no there, well, it's all dead in the water anyway. But if the answer is yes, you walk into the May town meeting, what is it, two weeks later, or week or two later, whatever it is, and you provide the two options for, although, does that miss? No, actually, that would miss a whole bunch. But then you provide the two options to say, which one do you want?
Because I think in the past, the biggest issue wasn't that people didn't want, I think they voted for the fire station, but they shot down how we're going to pay for it. So this method not only gives the voters, well, doesn't matter, they have the power anyway. The voters already have the power, they're going to decide yes or no, but this, if we can make this work somehow, I think we'd give the voters not just yay or nay, but two real options to look at financially and positions the fire department to not have to look at, well, there's one option, it's pass or fail. You know, there's actually then, okay, if you guys like this, we're all set. If you don't like that, there's another option that we could talk about and still make this happen.
That could be brought up at town meeting, though, don't you? I don't think you need to have two separate.
No, we, I don't think at town meeting we could do an amendment on the amount.
It'd be complicated.
In my opinion, option one and four, I'm not with that. I like option three the most for the reasons that you guys brought up. I'm not opposit completely to four, I just don't think that it's worth the confusion. And I think the more we're going to put anywhere out there to confuse the people, the less susceptible they will be for what is that we were trying to do. And the number, putting the number on it, I'm really with it. I think that full transparency, this is what it is in our best, you know, as far as we are with the numbers. And I would, I would like to see the actual number. So people know, taxation-wise, too, we don't know, again, it's a soft, I mean, not a soft cost, but a feasibility study numbers-based, so we don't even know, we can just talk about different options. But there could be a big difference from 13 million to 10 million, the 3 million could potentially be school funding, or roofs, or something. I think 3 million is a lot of money, is what I think. It's a big difference to me.
We all, I think we need to consider that at fall town meeting, this had a, this project has a lot of momentum. It was 80% in the positive, 20% maybe in the negative, if it might even have been higher than that. So we just got to keep that momentum, knowing, I think, I think the people trust us, they know, they know we need it, they understand it, it's been well thought out.
We took right on a point.
I would go for, I would go for number three.
Well, they trusted us last time, and it still failed two or three times.
I know, but they have to have a firm numbers, and you know, if you have $40 here, $40, and this is based on 438,000 median, median assessed value of the house. I mean, we're going from, we're from 700 to 400, so it could be, that number doesn't really, you know.
Oh, yeah, that's just the average number.
Just the average number, which, you know, is more towards probably the lower end. So until we have the, I think, the more firm numbers, I think that that's when we should, um.
Well, does anyone believe we should pursue options one or two?
No, I mean, not in my opinion.
I mean, I don't.
Me neither.
So then we're just down to three or four. And honestly, I'm okay with either one. It just, which one is more probable in our estimation to pass both, don't forget, it's both the ballot and town.
Yeah, I just think that this is, it should not be a question of if we need a fire station, and the difference between the three and the four should not be a deal breaker at this point. Where on the, on the flip side, that say there is a $3 million difference, that could do some good somewhere else. People want to do what they're going to do, you know, for such a small difference in taxation. That's my opinion. And that confuses, the more you put out there, the more people are confused, the more starting to think about it, talk about it, defeated in their minds. Like I said, again, my opinion, option three, full transparency, full as the best that we can do as far as the numbers are concerned, and put it right there on the paper, so people don't have to, you know, wonder about it and seek opinions of others.
See, I'm curious why town, why bond council thinks we can put a number on the ballot. I don't think I've ever seen that in my life.
He seems strong, you know, to give a strong indication that that was a practical approach.
It might be practical, I'm just not sure it's legal.
I know, but, you know, it's like they're going to draft, you know, they're going to be responsible for drafting.
I don't know what happened with the, with the, you know, SCAL budget. People were all confused about all different numbers, they were calculating their taxation, they were going from this to this to there, and this is what, it's just, I just don't want that commotion. This is so important and so needed for this town.
I think, though, a lot of the confusion, I'm going to, it doesn't matter how I say it, I'm going to piss off, doesn't it?
I thought you heard that.
Well, a lot of that confusion, I think, just came from what many people feel was a mismanaged process from Dudley, and I'll leave it at that. Charlton was pretty clear, I think, all along. And I think just to hopefully relay Ms. Roskew's fears, whether you go with option three or four, whether we found a way to put them both on as separate articles, each individual article is going to be explicitly clear with the people in Charlton, what's happening. There won't be any confusion.
Madam Chair, you know, I think, as we're looking at the numbers right now and knowing that we're still kind of waiting on the schematic design portion of it, I think if we're able to commit to, say, 13.04 number and say that that's the number that we're going to take to a, to a debt exclusion vote, and then if there's any variance from that after the schematic design, that goes under the limit, and that number changes, and we adjust accordingly.
You know, that's a fair compromise.
And just so that way, if we want to start advertising for this debt exclusion now, we can take that 13.4 to the bank, rather than kind of waiting out another month and saying, nah, we're still waiting for things to pan out. No, we're going to ask for an exclusion of 13.4, and the rest of it, we're going to find a way to fund it.
So even if hypothetically, and I hope it doesn't, it goes up to 14, we're still only going to say debt exclusion of 13.4. What if it goes down to 12?
So I should say I'm on the.
You're optimistic.
Yeah. Every once in a while, I try.
And I'll try to, and I'll try to qualify this. An exclusion gives you a license to tax, it does not mean that you have to. Like, and to say, because we had a 700, you know, $1,000 excess levy capacity, means that we did not even utilize the debt exclusion that we had on the highway garage, you know. So if you have the capacity to do it within your operating budget and you can keep that, it's, the debt exclusion is simply the license of the town to tax to that.
I can go either way on this one, or I still can't like David's idea, though.
I mean, honestly, I like more of it under the levy, I mean, it's.
Andrew, if I may, could you humor me? It seems like the majority of the board likes three and four, at least as options. I know Bill, and I think, actually, I won't speak for Bach, or if they prefer three. Steve seems, Pete seems to prefer four, which was my first choice, although I'm open to three. Bill says he prefers three, but he's open to four.
I'm open to four, exactly.
It's the same two. Could you, would you please, just humor me, and just look into if it's possible to have the article crafted for both option three and four, and if we find out that we can do that?
Yeah, and I don't think the article, the article would be as much of an issue if town meeting wasn't before the debt, it wasn't before the vote. And I think that's where we kind of get in the weeds a little bit.
So you want to put a number in?
I'd like to have a number, as long as where you can legally put that number on the ballot, because otherwise, we got to exclude the project. And then it's just a matter of, you're more or less an option two, and you're hoping that the town is recognizing that we're going to do everything in our best interests and keep debt, you know, fit money within the limit.
I mean, I'm open to three and.
All right, have it for discussion.
I would.
I'm sorry.
I would.
No, no, please go.
I would make a motion to adopt option three for discussion.
I'll second for discussion, but I'd like to caveat it with Andrew's piece to say not to exceed 13.4 or 13.04. So if it does come in higher than that, we're not going to exclude 14, we're not going to exclude 13.5, it's just 13.04. So if you wanted to amend your motion, or handle, I'd be happy to second that as well for discussion.
I would amend the motion to that.
Then I will happily amend my second.
Chief, you want to add anything?
At the end of the day, this is a funding mechanism.
Yeah.
And, you know, what I have to say to that is not relevant.
You know, we're in a different time and place in the public safety building, but remember when, years ago, we went out for that, it was 28 million was what we asked the town, and they said yes. The bits came back at 23 and change. That might not happen nowadays, but, but I was watching the, being on the committee, I was watching what the architects, the architects are doing, and they're padding that, accounting for inflation and a lot of the things. I wouldn't be surprised if this came back in, in a total in 14, 15, though. I wouldn't be surprised by that at all.
We're not going to know that at the end, though, because they're going to still put that 15% in.
It's true. We can't count on it, we can't count on it.
So I would just temper that, because that's nice to have. If it does come in lower, that's great, but we, you know, we talk about being transparent, we want to give them a number upfront. But we, you know, we talk about being transparent. We wanna give them a number upfront.
Oh yeah.
Oh yeah, it is. And, you know, if it's less, then it's Christmas in July, right?
Right. Imagine that. That's good.
So I'm fine with going forward with a thirteen point oh four, which would be for now, and a product for the average homeowner's appraisal value around a hundred eight, pardon me, a hundred eighteen, a hundred eighty dollars, a hundred seventy nine dollars and sixty cents to be exact, under option three for now. But I would be very upset with Bond Council if they come back and say that you can't put a number on the ballot, because I don't think you can. But that's okay. So.
All right.
And, and Andrew, just so that everybody at home understands, this is standalone project costs. This has nothing to do with the schools, nothing to do with the highway department rolling off. This is just, this project on its own stands on its own.
Right, not factoring anything to say, well, you know, we're, we can make these numbers look a lot better if I, if I factor in other things that are gonna fall off. No, I want, this needs to kind of look at it, you know, as what it is.
That's important.
And also to add that we already spent the, you know, the cost of the, the schematics, the four hundred thousand and a hundred thousand.
We, we, yeah, the town's already paid for three line items. Yeah, we've already gone through that.
And Basha, three, you've, again, for like a team discussion? Andrew, that pay down funds, the one point five, that's worth thinking on taking out a cap, like cap state?
Yeah, that's, that's the money that we've been putting into that. But, you know, just kind of putting in there too is that we also have, you know, we have a healthy stabilization fund. It's met our policy, but there's, you know, that is, it's a funding source. We still have four hundred thousand dollars in free cash that has not been allocated in the current fiscal year that we don't have, you know, that we haven't committed elsewhere. And then we have another approximately a hundred thousand dollars in bond proceeds that can go toward this project and actually really should go toward this project because it can only be used for long term capital.
So town meeting would have to approve this plus the transfer from cap state for however much we want. So if we use, if we use free cash, the four hundred and the ninety eight, we'll still have to take a little, well, basically just call it a flat mill from, from the capitalization fund to, to make this happen. But you would think if you pass one, you're gonna pass the other. All right, anyway, I've said my piece. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, no, me too.
So is this motion negating David's request to see if both can be on the article?
Yes, I think for now, yes. Not for now, I'd say yes, even though I think it's a good idea.
All right.
Yeah, the most one was just to put number three on.
So let's vote. Do you want to get a motion?
Yeah, Steve made the motion. I, I have a second.
He's second. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, chief. And you oppose?
I oppose.
May I ask, Andrew, since it's the board's decision to go with three, could you craft, I guess I'll just call it a back pocket amendment for option four, so that that is ready to go at town meeting? So that should there be an issue, we have the ability to pull out an article ready to go. That's an argument.
Because between now and then, actually, how about this? What, what I, what I recommend though is, it's like Mr. N's point. Could we still investigate that? Because we don't close the warrant for a few more weeks. So to David's point, that might give us some back pocket flexibility to potentially add it on.
I don't see a problem. Why are we voting on option three right now? That makes, if we're gonna still investigate?
We don't investigate, we're just investigating the possibility of putting the, the, it's on the warrant, correct?
You just want it to happen.
Yeah.
As a back.
There's no option, it's just, yeah.
Well, I think we're voting now.
Already voted.
Yeah, it's already done. We already voted, so. Pete, did we get it?
I'm there.
Yeah. Pete, yeah. Pete, no. We abstain. We, yeah. Is it good? All right, so moving on.
I just wanted to, Chief, did you want to give any update on the project during?
Oh, yeah.
From, from today's meeting?
Sure, yeah.
So in the process of getting to schematic design, we had a subcommittee meeting with the architects and the, our representative. And again, we've been working with the abutters to kind of alleviate some of their concerns and certainly take in their concerns to the best, best that we can with the site. The site has its limitations as well. So only allow it, were able to manipulate it so much, we came up with a, what I thought was a pretty good compromise that kind of appeased across the board as, as far as, now again, you know, we can, we can have a different conversation when the abutters show up. They may say something different, but we took their concerns into consideration and we were able to manipulate the building as far away from their line of sight and their prompting to make it work.
By the way, shout out to Steve, Ed, Scott Cedar, Ken Ryan Hill, and everyone else involved with, like, with that committee. You guys have really done like an amazing job. I mean, I kind of seagull in and out. You guys really do a great job.
And, and the abutters as of today are, from the last meeting, they were going over the plans they just saw, but I haven't heard any.
We have a meeting next week. It was just a, a internal meeting today.
I will, I, I can inform you that the abutters did come down to our station last week because they had a concern about the noise and the tones going off. So we showed our building and gave them an example of how tones could sound. And they are very appreciative of giving our time to show them what that was gonna entail.
That's good. Great conversation. All right, thank you, Chief. Moving on.
So recommendations for the government study committee.
Government study.
So the government study committee completed their review of the two thousand sixteen government study white paper report and provided recommendations to, for the boards, like, considering the backlog, the rational changes that the report is attached. And they've been invited to tonight's meeting to discuss the recommendations and points.
Good evening. I'm Joe Hadler. General meeting, this is Jared Noble. Just looking at old home day can be near at the whole.
We're gonna be in the same room.
Finance selectmen, you guys are with them.
We started this project in the May of two thousand and twenty-two. And our goal was to look at the, advice, two thousand sixteen report that we started, very good report, and see what had been accomplished. We also went further and did our own recommendations and investigation. We met with as many departments as we could. And we received good operation from all of them and had some very interesting discussions. And we, we, we kept it on the issues. There were no, no personalities involved, nothing, we already had an extra grant. So that was, I'll wait for it. And so I, I don't know if you want me to go through all of the, the recommendations from two thousand sixteen. Some that have, have been completed and some of, some of which are in our recommendations. Particularly if we look at the finance director. Finance director's position was created, and by, by the way, I have to say that, that one of the great things that was done was to, the human resources and financial management, I, I think was a great improvement from what happened. And so kudos to the town for, for doing that. But the finance director has not been approved by the bylaw changes. Apparently it was supposed to, but from what I understand, it was pulled at the last minute. But I think that if you, we do the bylaw change to codify that position, the position will have more opportunity to direct a financial policy. So another, another thing that was in our report as well as the two thousand sixteen report was the position of constables. And they, they're elected physician now. And in two thousand sixteen, they wanted to make an appointed physician, but it was defeated this time. And some of the reasons for that is obviously there are some physicians in town that, some years we don't get anybody interrupted since. Pre-war in constables, sometimes we do, sometimes we get some good ones. But they can, to continue with that, they have good constables and people that will take the job seriously. The, the idea of appointed is much better because you get people who are qualified and you know they're gonna do the job.
One thing I'd like to add was from the constable, Brad is here. You have to be level headed and it's almost a police type action. Not a, you know, like that. But you really have to be level headed and be able to take abuse. And I think somebody just running for election and being elected probably has no idea what they're getting themselves into. So that's, that's one of the reasons.
Most people running for select would say that.
And it puts, and it puts for whole town. It exposes the whole town.
Well, one of the things that happens on, on some of these that are elected, like the town clerk or the three-woman, the, the constables, is where it puts the town in legal situations. If these people mishandle some of this stuff, the town can be in some serious trouble. And again, that's why we, we recommend that it be appointed so you can look at the people, evaluate it, and go from there. But moving on.
Just, just to let you know, the town pressure used to be in elected positions.
Did it really begin to?
Yes. Way back when. You have to, I've been around a little bit. Don't you say anything.
Something about high school history, not gonna say a bad thing.
Okay, continuing on, the chain of command, the organization, that, that's been improved tremendously. Andrew, I think I've made a track.
First thing I did, I beat COVID.
We've been gruesome here with it.
That's true.
Okay, one of the big problems we have in town is volunteerism. And that, I, it, it needs to be addressed somehow. We have people that volunteer for everything. There's one right here. And they, we have some areas that we're trying to get to. And so this, this shows up in elections too. Because there's one, one time in election, it was so boring that girls didn't, they got needlepointed. I'm lucky to be alive.
There's a point on the volunteering. Steve, and we're back to old home day again. But Steve, at the old home day meeting, we decided we're gonna try to set up, not old home day itself, but set up a, a little group that goes out and looks for volunteers for these things. And Steve was, was gonna lead us in that.
I'm, I'm ready for tomorrow night. I've got everything right. Mary printed everything out here. And it, and, and the job with, the job that I volunteered for strictly for that is membership chair. You have to be out there hunting. You really do. And especially nowadays. But I've asked, out of ten people, twelve people, maybe ten, eleven people I've asked, I got three. And one is treasured. Right out of it. So sometimes people just wanna be asked. But then you have to let them fill out, let them do what they wanna do too, right? You can't, you can't bore them after that. You gotta keep them. It's almost like an HR position.
I think that, what he's working on is a good idea with this for old home day of the town in general. I think that's something that, it's a good thing and I can do a good job with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Continuing here, the, one of their points was that, looking at camaraderie in the town offices. And this has improved greatly. A lot of people worked hard to do that. The question is, how do you keep that? How do you keep that going year after year? This is where vigilance in, particularly those people who are hired, who are not, and not elected. And so that's something that, that's a challenge for any town. The planning board director was the full position. And let's see. The evaluations of employees, some departments do that, other departments don't. And some have good reason for it, you know, and specifics on that. Let's see. We've had, had an IT person. And that, I'll tell you, had to get on another board. That has been a godsend. Because the active person understands the process and has been a great help. Okay? So I think we, we should get into our recommendations. And do you have any questions on two thousand sixteen?
No, I'm already reading the twenty twenty-three one.
How long did you work on it a year? She said, how long?
How long?
Did you work on this?
Oh, a year and a half.
I was gonna say it was a while, right?
It was a while, yeah.
Now, Steve, you can't read ahead. Our first recommendations about the town clerk's position. And I know Karen, it's, it's supposed to be on the agenda. And I don't know if you wanna come up and, and join us for this. But we, we looked at this and looking at the position of the town clerk is very, very important. There are towns, you know, you, you look at what they do. And it's not a part-time position at all. It's a full-time job. Unfortunately, right now in election, if I get elected, I don't feel like going in. Well, I'll just only work two days a week. I could do that legally. There are so many other things involved with it, with state and federal laws that need to be, adhere to. Running elections is just one major part of it. And there are all, all types of other things, like dog licenses, marriage certificates and everything. There was one case, great act in the old days, where a person went to get their marriage certificate and it wasn't there at the town clerk's office. The town clerk had left it at home. And they had to go down and get it the day of the wedding. I mean, I'm not mentioning names, but I know the people involved in this. So it, it needs, it needs professional management. It, it needs an accountability. And particularly in this day and age where politics is going wacko, there's a lot, a lot involved in it. Karen, I don't know if you wanna add anything to this.
Yeah, I think with all the changes from, that the legislature's put through, especially with, having to do with elections. You know, even now, we have new, they're changing our state system and all that's gonna be new. And they're changing our marriage, death, vital records. So that's increasing. And every time they do that, it just makes it more work somehow instead of less. But the election part is really, really changed the job and changed the office. I can't imagine, I mean, I've been in there for fourteen years. I can't imagine walking in this year and never having set foot in a town clerk's office before. It just, people do it, but you're not gonna keep them at that point. You really need someone that's got some background. It's been an assistant somewhere else. And, you know, if you have an assistant that does live in town, they can't move up into the town clerk's position. I just think it puts, it does put the town at risk. It's a really important job. And you want someone that can, can do it. Anybody can learn it. I'm not saying it's not, you know, it's not accounting that you have to go out to school for it. But it's just a lot. It's a lot. And a lot of state laws that change, like, every month it seems. So, you know, I just think it's time. It's, it's changed, like I said, in that time, just since I've been there, it's changed a lot. So I think, you know, in the past, I think since I've been in the town, it's probably gone about twice and hasn't passed. But it wasn't really, you know, advocated to make the change, so.
One of the things I'd like to say about that is you really need a professional, not necessarily a doctor or something, but somebody that's a professional in her capacity. And in the legal liabilities the town can face, if she messes something up, it can be extremely expensive, is the best way to put it. And to me, it's the legal responsibility that she has for the town and trying to keep town out of those pickles. You could get into it if you have just a rookie show up and trying to do things. But I've worked in, in her office on some of the ballots and things. Boy, if you're not careful with that stuff, or you can get in a lot of trouble fast. And she does a good job with it. But just. But just having work, you know, you've, you've gotta be careful with everything you do.
And now, and now, I mean, we've gone, you know, from one or two elections a year to a six-month election cycle, right? We can't, we're not in our room right now because we're.
Right. And we share this five elections, so we have to. And the mail-in ballots really, really have, they, like, difficult. I mean, it's good, a lot of people love them, but, you know, it's, it's very time-consuming, you know? You know, the early, early voting's great, but even that isn't, um, you know, the town clerks were open Saturday. We had twenty, twenty people maybe, um, and that was the high end across the state. So people aren't doing the early voting because of doing the mail-in. So, you know, the legislature might change it, but that's not gonna happen next year.
No, no, that's probably never gonna happen. So do we wanna take these one at a time, or I would make a motion that we, that we put on the, um.
It's for the discussion.
Before we do this, I just wanna.
I'm reading ahead again, I'm sorry.
You're reading ahead. Detention. I, I looked at this in, um, the, the state law. And what you have to do is has, has to go through ballot vote and town meeting vote. Now, this is, I put the citation in here. Now, check this, the town of Arlington is doing that this year.
And a ballot vote. Not just, not just town meeting and a ballot vote, and then approval from the state. So this is a process.
Yeah, um, you can't do it for select or for school today, this process. You can't, uh, can't change it to an appointed position. But, um, it, it's something that, when, when, when it happened earlier this, this last year, I said to myself, it doesn't sound right. And so I looked it up with the help of the town clerk's office and the help of the state senator's office and confirmed that, and with help of Andrew. And I think that, has the, uh, town council agreed on this?
Right, he, he agreed on the town clerk portion. It was the, it was the, uh, tree warden that he pushed back on and said that didn't require the ballot.
Cause there's nothing in MGL about that.
There's a separate MGL references.
I would question that, but I'm not a lawyer. I only have five opinions.
So I'm not necessarily opposed, but I think there, you know, there's potentially more work to be done, um, to making sure that we're, as a board, would assign or appoint somebody appropriately, like a list of competencies, you know? What, what is the evaluation process? What, what terminates removal? Um, you know, cause we're almost taking, we're taking, we're taking away from the general public, putting it in the hands of a select few. So I think for transparency purposes, we need to be very, if we were to move forward with this, we would be, need to be very clear, what qualifies the board for appointing somebody and what is, what is grounds for removal from that position too. So, you know, in my opinion, I mean, I think we need more, more work on that.
Yeah, I mean, there's one more year left. There's two more years, okay? And according to the law, if you, if this is passed, she continues. And so there's two years to come up with the specifics on, uh, job and hiring, firing, all that. So there, there is time there.
Do you have a job description, sir?
We figured you might.
To answer one of, uh, I'm not sure what your name is, but.
Pete.
Pete, uh, on our twelfth recommendation going along with what you're saying, we recommend that the town has goals and policies which that would be a part of. And, uh, I think it's very important for a town to have goals for all the different departments to look at, and then policies for those to follow. And one of the most important policies you have is a policy on how you, if you don't follow your policy, how you justify it. That is also a policy. But it's important to have goals for the town and specific policies of what you want different people to do and how you want them to handle it. And if it doesn't fit into the policy, who to talk to, to, to work it out. But that's, I know I'm jumping ahead, but you brought up policies, that was one of our things that we should have.
No, I, I definitely appreciate that, but as a voter, I like to educate myself on the candidate and I like to make my decisions. So, you know, I, I definitely appreciate where you're coming from on this, but I feel as a citizen, you know, resident of Charleston, this is taking something away from me as a resident.
It's taking away from, from, maybe, but if you elect somebody, and we've seen it in politics, if somebody gets elected and they had no clue what they're doing, it's political. But, um, we, if you have somebody who's professional, who knows the laws, knows how, what they're doing, they serve you better.
Yeah. Madam Chair, the, the flip side of that, and just playing devil's advocate, uh, per Karen's own comment, just taking out with new laws, she doesn't know them either, which means she has to learn the new laws as they come out, just as a new clerk would, number one. Um, I'm not advocating for either direction of this, and just, again, pointing out the flip side. The flip side is you have a position that becomes appointed and now becomes a political gangmanship, where who's connected to the right people in town hall, they get the job. I've, I've seen that happen. Um, also, as far as new town clerks, new town clerks superior across the Commonwealth every year, which is why the state does training. Heaven forbid something should happen to Karen or whatever, and you need to get a new town clerk. You, you just, you can't get anyone out unless they have town clerk experience. You can't get someone who is an HR director in the private world or a CEO. They can be trained. And so just, I think it's something to also consider. And I'm gonna point out, if I may, that the government study review committee, right, put a lot of time, a lot of effort and thought into this, to bring us recommendations. My personal feelings are the boards should not sit here and go one by one and just make decisions off the cuff on what we're gonna do. We've got the recommendations to take under advisement. I'd rather see us come together in a workshop and go over these. And then bring forward our opinions on number one through twelve to the public on why with this committee, what we're gonna move on this one and not that one, and this one and not that one. We can actually have a thoughtful discussion as a board to go over all of the recommendations. Yeah, I think it's a good idea if everybody goes through all of that, we could have a, a meeting, like a pleasure, and go over detail.
I want the assumption where you guys said it two months back.
And we wanna present it, so you've got it. You can work on it, and then we can all get together and go over, go it over again.
There's a lot of good stuff in here. Do we close the warrant again, can you everybody?
Uh, end of next week.
End of this, end of this week. So that's my, and to bash it to you, that's my concern, is about something like this, that if.
Could deal with in the fall.
Yeah, we wait, like, we'll have to wait till the fall, which is not a terrible thing, but, you know, it just means the fall's in. It's a couple months later.
My, my personal feeling is something like this should be in the annual.
Yeah, I agree with Joe.
I think that sometimes when the, the fall meetings sort of slip things in there. I've been around, I, but, uh.
But, but as, but as long as, and I, I, David, I agree, as long as, if, if we're gonna form that committee and get together and talk about it. But we're looking at two different ones, twenty sixteen, I don't think anyone's acting on that one. Now it's twenty twenty-three, and what's, we have to act on this one.
Actually, if you read the report they submitted, they give the progress on sixteen. This has been accomplished, this has been accomplished, this is in progress. So actually, the other ones have all, all had progress or accomplishments on them completely. There's only actually a, in fact, I don't think, I don't think there's a single one from sixteen or another one that had nothing done or no accomplishments or isn't already on, either done or almost.
So, Madam Chair, the way I think about it is that, and again, we can go through all the details, is that there are twelve recommendations. And again, thank you to the committee, you guys did a fantastic job. Really, I think what it comes down to is, does this board wanna proceed with? The way I look at it, it's really around the bylaw changes, so around potentially constables, tree warden, and, and town clerk, and potentially passing a bylaw for the finance director? Do we wanna proceed for that in May? Do we wanna table it, for lack of a better word, for further discussion until the fall? Which I would prefer, like Mr. Hadler, I would prefer we wait the worst until next May to see what happens. Because if we have to close the warrant in, in, in a week, we're either determining tonight that we're gonna proceed with warrant changes in May, or we're gonna sit on this for months, if not a year.
Joe? The, the one that we recommend, if you'd done it, please, the first one, town clerk. The others can wait. I mean, uh, because they're not, yeah, they're important, but they're not as crucial, in our opinion. And of course, she does have a, you know, an assistant, which otherwise it would be a really tough job. But, uh, this is, this is why it's number one. But the others, um.
Well, we could do number two, right, Joe, as well?
Number two?
Cause that's just cleanup work, that, that's a finance director by law.
It's already done, it's just.
Let me, let me just go through the rest of the recommendations. Uh, one of the props that we have at the, the town hall is, uh, location space. I mean, we have the finance director up over here and to contact, you know, talk with, uh, her other people just across the building. And some days it can be tough. So she's, and she's in a little cubby hole. So I, it, it, to my way, I think it's too bad that the, uh, furniture cover thing didn't pan out. Because, I mean, I, I know all the things wrong with it, and it's too, too expensive. But to get departments together like that, it's, you know, too bold. It won't be done right away. The tree warden, we've done, done that. And of course, it should be in the Department of Public Works, that's where it is. As well as the facilities manager, someone who can take control of the things that need to be fixed. Again, Public Works. Town records, a lot of them have been digitized, but I think it's important that all of them be digitized. And being an historian, as Bill knows, um, I would like to see them go back and do all of them. But again, that's a, a big, big job for one person. They have companies that do it and, but there's a cost. So, I mean, might be able to get a grant or something, but, um, because sometimes, I, I've heard of boundary disputes that go back to the seventeen hundreds. I wasn't around then, were you? He's actually older than me. So that, that's the thing. Uh, not, another issue, and this is, this was brought up by many of the committees, was parking around here. This, this is an issue between the library, the ball fields, the senior center, meetings going on here at the town hall. It, it, it's a real tough thing. And to look at, uh, you know, a committee that's in all that. And of course, this street out here, it goes both ways, and boy, that can be tough sometimes. So that's, that's a recommendation that people might, might help to tell. Uh, like, again, I think this was on the, uh, the last one, the charter commission, just to get the idea of what would be like to make changes in the government, what would it look like? Let's say, uh, it takes a while to do this, and the idea of a town manager versus, uh, town administrator. So that, and that's been an old idea for, for a long time. Department of Public Works, you've got a public works director, but you don't have the department. And when we had our meeting in May, I think it was, we had some good discussion. And there were a lot of people that were opposed to it. But what they were talking about, the cooperation between departments, cemetery, recreation, parks, it practically exists, it's innate. So, you know, the, the, the highway superintendent, Jerry, he's a good man, uh, is very cooperative on, with, working with other people. And they did a good job on it. So there, there might be some costs to it, but I don't, I personally don't think it's a, a big thing. But just to get, get, because let's face it, things are changing, and people in those positions are maybe gone in another ten years. There's probably five, ten years, maybe next year. Uh, but, you know, it really, uh, I, I think would be better coordination for, for the town. And, uh, okay.
Actually, uh, bash it to you. So Joe, I just had a quick question on this. It's somewhat related because we mentioned recreation. I'm curious around your thoughts on the recreation commission being appointed versus elected.
Well, depends on how you wanna do it. If, if recreation, I was on it for many years, and we had to take care of the ballots.
Yep.
Well, if you had a recreation committee that could do programs, rather than orientate by, well, is the grass too tall, too, too short? I, I think it's a possibility down the line. So.
But that's a hold for now and just keep it elected, like for now.
Yeah, we didn't look at that.
We think that the department in general is a good idea.
Yep.
And parks and recs would fit under that, cemetery would fit under that, the tree warden would fit under that. Uh, and it would all be under that department. But it's, it's nothing that has to be done right away. And I, I'm not sure who, the person that's doing it now, I know Jerry, and any of those departments could call Jerry, and he would make sure they had what they needed. They needed equipment, you know, he'd make sure Banco got down there at the cemetery to do it, uh, the laundry mode. Cause I believe Jerry has all the, had all the contracts as far as lawns and things around town.
And we have Nick Peel doing it now, who's also doing a great job.
Yeah.
No, absolutely. What about water sewer? Again, same question, because in my old world, living in Nobry, same type of thing, DPW, everything got reorganized. And from what I remember, uh, water sewer got moved under the DPW.
I think that would be a good idea, that's probably more difficult than the others.
Yep.
But to me, I would have one department. That would be all of that kind of.
So something to think about, maybe not today.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, water sewer is, has its own enterprise fund.
Yeah, exactly, that's what makes it interesting, yeah.
But you're also, to do a, to do this, you'd have to look at the departments that you're observing and do some changes there. You know, with their, uh, role is. So it can be done.
I think we all, we almost need to tackle this first and that solve some of the other ones, especially like with the tree warden. But you need to, you need to establish that overarching DPW and then roll these departments into it. So I think, you know, if we're able to, and it makes sense, if we're able to look at that, then, then we could take care of some.
No, I'm with Pete on that one.
But that's a big one. But, you know, you're right, let's see that. Then the town's constables. Number eleven.
Sorry, Joe, same thing, Jerry. Speaking of constables, Brad, what do you think? I'm sorry, Matt, through the chair, that's my fault. What do you think? Appointed, elected? You don't care?
My, my.
Sorry, I didn't mean to make that shit up, Brad.
Uh, my pleasure. The reason I decided I would run for constable was I just retired and I wanted to pay back the town. But there are many reasons for this, but I wanted to pay back the town because I owed. The town saved my life. And the ambulance service, the fire department, the police department, I'm very proud of all of them. And I wanted to find a way to give back. And it was suggested to me that it might be good for a beginner who's not a politician, who was a railroad engineer and, you know, not a retired cop from Worcester from twenty-five years ago. It was a good way, and it's allowed me to meet people. It's fantastic. I like it just the way it is. It's been good to me, but I just try to do the best I can.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
I guess the last one that we, we have here is, a report like this should be done periodically. And we, we did the best we could with it, but.
Did a very good job, yeah.
One, one caveat to this, you know, is that nobody from this committee should be on the duty board.
There should be fresh people.
Fresh people, yeah.
Yep, yep, no, I agree with that, that's a, that's a smart recommendation.
Yeah, we thought of that.
What are you suggesting about the other one?
Um, what's it?
You said that was a.
Yeah, the rest I'm still debating.
You said, well, what are you implying about the other one?
You said you'd like to roll that one. Well, what are you implying about the other one? He's used to that with me. Nice big cut.
Bobby Flay over there.
Bobby Flay, playing myself.
So is the real, so I'm just curious for the board, and again, thank you both, this is fantastic. So is the real discussion for tonight at least, because personally, I think we should pursue all of these, just, just a matter of when? Because I really, I really like Pete's idea, especially around figuring out the DPW, because I think a lot of that, like, has further implications. So I love that idea. So I'm thinking like one and two are the conversations we might want to have tonight, to either say, yes, we're going to proceed now, or we're going to table it.
Ken, you just ran last fall, or last spring, right?
Yeah, you got two more years.
So we have two more years.
But it's going to take a while to get this hypothetically passed and moved on, et cetera.
You wouldn't want to do it this year or the latest, but eight, twenty, twenty-five.
I'm saying, there's going to be too many, for me, there's going to be too many questions to get this on the May ballot.
Can we start with number two? How about, and then we go back to number one. So I'm going to make a motion that we adopt, and I'm going to ask Andrew to figure out the language with counsel, that the finance director, basically that the bylaw change be made, so that it's above, I don't say it's not above board now, but just to make it official. Because to me, that's a more of administrative, that it should be there, and it's not, and this will just clean everything.
Remember, I don't think she has, the finance director has the ability to, legal ability to make policy.
Yep. So this would allow that to happen, yeah.
It should be the official financial.
Right, yeah. So I'm going to make a motion on that, because to me, that's more administrative and cleanup.
If you second.
So clarify that for the people watching, about whether or not that's taking away all the financial decision-making from the board and Andrew.
I don't read it like that.
Because you're giving the person the authority to make financial policy.
But not decisions. That still falls under us, as well as Andrew.
But your decisions now fall.
I have, I have the draft.
We can make a policy that articulates that.
Yeah.
Right, because now your decisions, though, have to now fall within their policy.
See, I look at policies as recognition, well, like, no, your point is well taken. It's just, maybe it's the definition of policy, type of thing.
If people want to take it out of the board's hands, then that's a, that's a legitimate reason to do that. But if they don't want to take it out of the board's hands, then it's not.
So we have the draft of what was pulled back from the last town meeting, and I can bring that back before the board. You know, at least give it a cursory review, see if there's anything blatant in there that, like, oh, wow, that's why it was pulled out. Bring it back to the board, we'll at least have a placeholder on the warrant, as long as everybody's good with it, we can put it in the council.
All right, how about this, then? I can't remember if I made a motion on it. Let's, at least for me, let's earmark a place bar, a placeholder, and discuss it. We're going to assume it's on the warrant, so we can close it, or whatever, but we have the option to, to like pull it out, if it doesn't make sense.
So only for number two, not, not number one?
Just, just number two for now, because I think that's more, in, in my eyes, that's more cleanup by law. But David brings up a good point, we want to make sure that the language is there. So then it goes back to number one, do we want to proceed for May, or do we want to discuss it further and talk through it?
Personally, I have the mind of putting it off till the following May, so we have time to actually, meaning as a board, go over this. I, I just think there's a lot more to it, and a lot more for us to consider than a quick decision this evening. And that would still allow us at least a full year, if not more, before that term is up. So I see this having plenty of time to act.
It's going to be, well, because you said it goes on a ballot, then the town meeting, and then it has to go through the rep.
Through the legislature.
Yeah, but then she would, she would still end up having to run, because that would be.
But this is two years, so we're not going to make, so are we going to make it?
No.
No.
Probably not.
Well, it might be close.
No, well, but then.
Probably not.
We're in the same predicament, in my opinion, I'm good to go.
The town clerk issue, a lot of towns now are going to appoint a town clerk. And so I think the legislature is attuned to that. And if we did it, I don't think it would take long to get it approved on there.
I'm in favor of making this change. Personally, I'd like to see it this May, but if it, but the reality is that if it would, if others feel more comfortable waiting a bit to discuss it, I'm fine with that, too, because we can talk to Brian now, or whoever our, our next state rep is along with Paul, to try to like push it through.
Yeah, but same as David said, if we can, if we can get it all, you know, articulated, put the hope there on it, it's the same. I mean, what is it for us to learn? You just, you know.
I think it's more discussed.
Yeah, more to discuss the main issues, but, I mean, a change was required by the town clerk's job, that's what changed then.
That's a lot to clarify, you know, with counsel, whether or not going through the legislature is required on this, because.
Oh, my, my.
Well, as I'm, as I'm just looking at the attached section of law, it says, that, you know, a, a town meeting vote in a ballot doesn't say anything about, and then through the legislature.
Is it that what you say, Joe? No? Did you check on the statute?
If it's done the right procedure, it shouldn't need, I didn't see anything.
Yeah, I didn't see anything.
I, I just assumed.
There would be no legislative.
I don't, I don't see the downside of this, of number one. I don't see a downside of, of.
My hesitancy is the quickness of, of trying to do it now, that we're only going to talk about it for, even though we've had the packet for a couple of weeks, and the, and the committee's done an awesome job. And just let me say, I'm completely, unless someone can really change my mind, I'm completely in favor of making this an appointed position. But again, I'm always open to a better argument. But I'm also cognizant that others may have concerns around rushing through this, and I'd be fine waiting until next May. Especially if we find out that we don't need legislative approval, then, then it's a non-issue.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not here to try and flay you or anybody else. And I'm, it would be inappropriate of me to go down the road of all the appointments that I've seen happen that were without question politically motivated, who you know, so.
What, you mean like selected?
We're not appointed. But so, I can tell you, as far as like just acting on it tonight, I'd be an automatic no, without time to digest it, think about it, talk about it.
So, David, I, I actually support that. That, that goes back to my list of competencies. Competencies are very different than a job description. That's why I think we need to identify competencies that need, the town clerk needs to hold in order to hold that position, so that we have a transparency, and there's not any political motivation on who we're selecting. And we have to justify our actions and, you know, show people why we picked them. And I think in order to have, you know, to be fair, we have to publicly say what those, that those competencies are, and not just say, you know, technical, technicalities of the position. I think we have to define that. That's why I've been.
But, but, but right now, we're on an election cycle for, I mean, for town clerk is, is an elected position. What competencies do they have to follow?
Is that the same?
But we're changing it to the board's, board appointed.
Well, we have, yeah.
You're looking at specifics.
Positions.
Knowledge of laws and, yeah.
So making it appointed without what Peter's talking about would be akin to if you would just said, all right, well, town, we're going to go town manager. Right? And it's elected. You know, anybody could, right? But no, you actually have for a town manager, or a town administrator, or a finance director, and we can run down the list to Pete's point. We've very clearly established what those competencies are going to be before, you know, nothing was just done like, oh, all right, here, you know, I like this idea, let's just do it. I mean, none of that work has been done. It's just, I'm not, I'm, I'm not prepared to make that decision tonight. If you guys want to do it, that's fine. You only need three. I'm just one of the notes.
Just, just so we're clear, we would be just having an opinion of the fact, if we, if we all agree with that position to be appointed, obviously, there would be a clearly defined, you know, job description as it is. We will, I mean, people will have to have faith in us, that we will do the best, and oversee possibly the best chain of events that had to happen to put all of those rules, competencies, and everything else in place. I mean, that, that is, to me, it's, I mean, it's the number one, obviously. But no matter what, we will, whichever way we will go, we will have the town's people, you know, well-being in mind, no? I mean, we understand what the job is.
We always hope that. Unfortunately, I have, I have throughout my time witnessed the opposite.
So, can I just point out, this is election year for the Board of Selectmen, and two members are up for election. So if we do this, you know, it could be another forty percent that are different board members on this, this thing. So I think we have to cross our Ts and dot our Is on this. That's my opinion. So, I mean, that's just, we could put it to vote, and if you think you get three, you pass, and you don't, you know.
And then, sure, I would only counter that, Pete, that except next year, when thankfully I'll be gone, they, it's going to be a forty percent like that every year. But that, but that being said, I'm fine waiting a year on this, especially because it sounds like MGL may not require us to do this. So if we go into next May's town meeting with some type of subcommittee work stream, or even discussions about yourselves, like obviously in a meeting, to talk around a job describ, as well as competencies, to go into next May to have that handled, I'm fine with that. Because, again, the existing town clerk, Karen, who's wonderful, has, has two more years on her thing. So this would, this wouldn't even be, be in effect for two years. So I think waiting to make people comfortable, Joe, did I say something wrong?
You mentioned MGL, what requires us to do what?
Oh, no, no, what?
Doesn't.
No, doesn't. I thought initially that it would require the ballot, the town meeting, and legislative approval. But it sounds like it's only ballot and legislative? And I'm sorry, ballot and town meeting, which helps our times.
That's what I want to make sure of. We have to make sure that this is not required, because if it is required, then we, we're not going to make it. So how about we do the placement for that, check it on that?
State approval would be after.
Right, after all these things have to happen.
After May.
Well, how about just.
May, after November.
We'd get it in November, yeah.
I think everyone kind of feels strongly one way or another on this, so in order to move us along, at least for discussion, I'm going to make a motion that we postpone this until next May.
Second.
David?
You have a motion and a second, so.
Any more discussion?
Any more discussion?
I've talked myself out of this, but like I said, this is a good idea, just a second.
So, so call vote, right? So Pete?
Generals.
The general vote? So pass, right? Oh, I just asked.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I didn't hear, ask for the vote.
Oh, I did. I thought you.
I did the motion, he made the second, but I didn't know that we took the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
May.
May. That being said, I would, Madam Chair, I'd like to have this as an, as, very quickly, that we start a process to get this on the May ballot next year, by having competencies, by having a job described, and working with Karen to figure out, I mean, as nicely what exactly is it you do, because I don't think most people really understand it.
Yeah, and there is, and Andrew, what is with the company that just came in, I know.
Right, we're in the process right now of doing a copy of class.
And, and we're going to also check out the town council opinion about if we need legislative approval, because if we don't, that makes our life a lot easier next year.
Just as a member of the committee, I, I like their ideas of having, when you go to them, you have a list of competencies, this is what you have to have to be here. This is how you, this is the job description, and if you go to the town meeting with that kind of stuff.
That's what I'm thinking.
And the questions come up, well, this is, this, you know, you can.
You want that for any department, any department head.
I know where to vote on it, but to your point, I think the obligatory question is, why are you doing this? And, and what is the impact? Oh, look, here's our paper that, that says that. I think it would help.
And that they know that, well, we're going to trust that you're not going to, you know, play games with the description for the job later. We have it. This is what we're offering. This is what we're proposing.
And when you, if it's voted, that's what's voted.
Yeah, exactly. Actually, Madam Chair, I'd actually like to take a step further, and have a recurring item, if the board pleases, to start to nail all, like, like truly develop plans for all twelve of these, because I'm actually in agreement with all twelve. Yeah, yeah, we just need to figure out the potential execution of them.
Yeah, we can't, we can't let this fall off.
This is a point from the committee, one of the things I've done in the past, and all the places I've worked, every month we pick a policy or a question, and that would be what we work on that month. And then that, the next one would be in next month. So we might want to try to do all twelve at one time. Just do this one, and do the next one, and do the next one, and whichever order would be appropriate.
Should that eleven, the recommendation for the new committee, be formed every five years? Should that be put in the bylaw somewhere, too? So it's firm?
Could be a more selective policy.
I think a policy. You can do five, six. In this case, it was, well, six years. Don't want to have it too close together.
Okay, so they're loving the policy, and the twelve. So that, that is kind of what I had in mind when we were talking with economic development on a five-year plan in general. There could be a component of that. I know they started to work on it. I don't know what that is, you know.
I think that should be reviewed every, every five years, in general. How it's going, how's that going, what should we change?
I agree. All right. Super. Great work. This is wonderful. Thank you so much. Madeline and Jacob, maybe nice for you, so about going back to what, what Jerry and Joe said about devoluterism. Maybe you want to think about it, put some thought into it, how would you approach that on the school level, as to maybe NHS, you know, the societies? Because I know myself, that every time we have tried through all different communities that we are on, to get the kids in, something is lacking there. You know, and oftentimes, we can use them. Jacob, you too, in eighth class.
We should make the town clerk position the scholarship question.
Well, there is one, right? Yeah. Madeline, can you, can you come up with some kind of an idea for next meeting? Just curious to know, because we need it for summer, for, you too, Jacob, yes? That would be awesome.
I mean, that's a little, or carry on, but I, I think the same thing with the constable level, too, because that's a highly technical position. I think we have to establish competencies for, for us, so we're not just playing the popularity game and picking somebody, so.
I think competencies for all the positions.
That's what I was going to say.
But that goes back to twelve, where I think we ought to have goals and policies and things in place, so when things come up, you've got a policy to work with. And again, I've said too often, but you need a policy on how you accept the policies. The thing in the corporate world is subhensually, and companies have to follow their policies. And if they don't, they have to have justification for it. That's just a general comment.
Absolutely agree. I also agree with Pete. I mean, there shouldn't be a single appointed position in this town that we have not identified competencies for, we're making a.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work.
This is the first time that Bill has agreed with me on anything.
Miracle.
You're not going to change my mind.
All right. Thank you, guys. Moving on. Policy review.
All right, so we have policies in the packet for highway department, weapons operating procedures, expectual services, fee to client appeal, expectation, servicing and training for liquor license holders, land policy and process under MGL sixty-one, sixty-two A, and sixty-one B, and licenses. The first one, there are no changes recommended by DPW for the expectual services. Simply a caveat added that this policy is applicable to National Logic Authority, section twenty-one D, or MGL forty, one forty-eight A, sections one to five, that are specific to the appeals process. One is changed to the inspection for training for liquor license holders, just mainly in line with state regulations, striking establishments have six months to comply with this policy.
So, I'm sorry, bash it to you. So, yeah, just to confirm on that one. So the existing law under C is new employees will have three months from the date of employment, or like, that's what the state says?
Correct.
Cool, okay. So ours was a little bit too generous.
Exactly. That's all. No changes of the lands, policy of process, and. Licenses, no change.
All right.
Andrew, one quick thing, though, under, and through the board, bash it to you, I'm sorry. Under licenses, can we remove that line that says amount decreased from a thousand, just for, just up on that? Uh, no changes. So if it pleases the board, I'd make a motion to accept all of them as submitted, but if not, I'll be happy to.
Your favor? Student civic person reports. Madeline?
So, starting with athletics, I'd like to start with that one, have a time. But varsity wrestling team has had three members placed at the division two championships. And congratulations to Sawyer Awat, placing first at championships, as well as first, and also. And congratulations to Sawyer Awat placing first at championships, first in all-state championships. And he will go on to compete next weekend. The varsity cheer team won first place at leagues and won grand champs for the day. Dudley middle and Charlton middle both placed as well, so congrats to our cheerleading teams. For track, the boys in the four by two hundred relay team placed 16th in the state competition, as well as being the third fastest squad to run the four by two hundred in school history. And then, I didn't put this on the paper, but I just wanted to add that spring sports registrations have opened and students wanting to participate can participate at shepherdhill athletics.com. In the arts, the tri and honor society is hosting a musical bingo game night on March 28th for students at Shepherd Hill. Again, this is not added on here, but I believe this will be opening to the public, but I'll provide further information on that. Players have a chance to win up to five or $150 in categories like trending, retro hits, Disney and Y2K pop. For school wide, the best buddies organization will be holding a boom of tournament on Thursday and March 14th at eight, from six to eight for students of Shepherd Hill, signups should be bound at Z0206, and there's a $5 registration fee. Signups end on Friday, March 1st. Finally, the guidance office wants to remind parents to reach out to your child's guidance council if they seem struggling or need extra support mentally and in school, and contacts are the dot DCRSD.org. That's it?
Good job.
All right, Jacob?
So as of today, students at Bay Path will be entering into the second half of the third quarter with midterm grades being issued on Friday. The National Honor Society is currently accepting applications with a deadline being March 8th. The student council and steering committee are currently planning on a school dance for March 16th. NCAS state testing for English is approaching for the sophomores in the coming weeks, with other subjects following in the later months. On April 11th, there will be a career fair in the gym from 1:00 PM to 2:30. Lastly, for general, general information and events, the next general advisory committee meeting will be held on April 3rd. For student achievements and sports happenings, the girls' basketball team has won the state vocational championship last Sunday.
Nice, very cool.
A group of students will be participating in the MIT event team design challenge. Also, with the warmer weather approaching, the ski club season is ending.
Very nice. Good job, Jake.
Town admin is triggered.
All right, public safety radio update, so we continue to work on the progress of the public safety radio system. Planning board approved site plan approval for the tower site at the Bay Path last week. Materials for the lattice tower have been delivered to the site, will begin construction soon. We're still targeting end of fiscal year for this tower to be up in operation. LNG plant, so we were made aware of some noise complaints stemming from the commission work going on over at NEC. Plant managers and engineers are aware of the issue, and right now, Mass D E P and Board Health are right on top of them to try to address it. So health department and Mass D E P are both ensuring that sound dampening for the facility is adequately tuned as to not impacting budding residential properties, and going to continue to press them on that issue. But in the meantime, if there's any residents in the area that are experiencing any of these noise impacts, they can either contact our office or the Board of Health, so that, just so that we can ensure that any issues are documented and being addressed as they're going through the evaluation.
Does this, Andrew, does this seem to be happening just because of commissioning or normal operation?
My understanding is that there is a baffling system that is attached to the tow lines and that need to be adequately, or that need to be acoustically tuned, that is really only identified during the commissioning process. So I know Mass D E P has been very pushing them hard to say, this is, this needs to be done immediately. It can't continue on night after night, so that, that is at least what has been conveyed to me as the reason why, and it shouldn't be during normal operation. So Route 20 construction over to Oxford, Oxford, I know during this meeting was the public information session, but we met yesterday with representatives from Mass DOT who kind of gave us a heads up on the update that they would be providing and the phase plan in advance of tonight's meeting. So the good news was that they're anticipating a much more aggressive timetable for completion of the project, since they were able to expedite some of the culvert and utility work, they actually moved the due date up a full year. But they did indicate, indicate that over the next construction period, that travel within the corridor is going to be restricted down to one lane in each direction. Mainly this is to provide additional protection for the contractors, allow them to work a little bit faster, but also address concerns related to speed through that work zone, I'm sure you might have seen the telegram present, it was concerned with about the speed at which people are traveling through there. But what was kind of brought up by Mass DOT district pre-director to me at the end of it, is that they're still are, have to provide us some plans for the reconstruction that they're anticipating between 49 and the Amazon project. He said, I should be getting something more from them soon, so I'm assuming that they brought their plans back to the drawing board and hopefully came with a different plan, but let's see.
We can assume that.
Why, we were all so favorable.
Exactly. And then finally, just for the senior center, so we did receive two sevills for the proposal for leased space for the use of the senior center. I've taken those, referred them to the council on aging to at least evaluate, provide a recommendation as to what one we potentially want to pursue. Additionally, the feasibility plans for, that we had commissioned under ARBA have been drafted for the combined senior center with arts and activities. That's being sent for cost estimation, so we should have fully booked at the same time that we can wait back.
Question for you. Andrew, just a quick question on the senior center piece. When would you expect we would potentially propose that to the town?
Ideally, I would have liked to, you mean that if it were with coal or if we were with lease?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's my fault, if we were with lease.
With a lease option, my hope was that we'd have something in time for spring. I feel like that may have been a little too idealistic, we may be looking more toward fall.
We like that you're idealistic, but hopefully not, not meant.
I don't believe that we're going to be in time for May, I think that was, hey, if everything fell in place and there was a number right on the front, and it was like, yep, this is definitely that. But I think there needs to be a little bit more vetting done with what the proposals that we received were. They're very drastically different proposals, I think we have to really take our time to go through it. And then I would say if we move forward with either of them, it would be till fall.
Very, thank you, that's what I was hoping you'd say, because I would feel very uncomfortable. Perhaps others would agree, you know, rushing through something that big until we get our ops budget finalized, so yeah. No, I think fall is the earliest, is a good idea.
And I, I agree with you, and I would definitely want to see the fire substation pushed through first and potentially any support for that would be through an exclusion. Separate.
All right, that's all, yeah.
All right, so any other business, I don't know the time of posting, anybody? Next meeting? 12, March 12th, we good? All right, that's it.
Oh, we do it next, sir. Yes, that being said, motion to adjourn.
Sir.
All in favor?
Thanks, everybody, thank you.